Welcome, everyone. Before we call the meeting to order, we will have a prayer by Councilman Ron Fitzwater, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I applaud it takes us on this opportunity to gather together, first of all, in this community, people across our state, and actually that is dealing with this crisis that's upon us. Thank you for all the work we've done, for what we've done, for President, leadership in Washington, they try to work forward through it, as always, for military around the world. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you for our public service here in Jefferson City. Much to add, much to do, but please, um, like I'm in, so, you know, some of our communities under stress, and thank you for the folks that are on the job and make those calls for police, and thank all the folks who work here at the city hall, and what they've gone through the past couple of weeks, and what we're going through, and just like to, to pray that you do what we do. Thank you for this community life and everything.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Republic of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God our God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I'll call to order the March 16th, 2020 City Council Meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Present.
Hesse.
Here.
Kenner.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Item three is their motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four miscellaneous agenda items. I'd like to skip to item E, Cole County Health Department update on coronavirus disease. And we have with us Kristi Campbell, the Director of the Cole County Health Department. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As you know, this is a quickly changing event, and we are doing our best to stay abreast of all the changes. We have strived to meet CDC's guidelines, follow recommendations from the Department of Health and Senior Services, and I'm going to read for you the statement that we read earlier tonight at a press conference. I'm sorry if you have to hear it twice. So COVID-19 is a viral illness that originated in Wuhan City, China at the end of 2019. This virus was initially thought to have been transmitted from animals to humans at a live animal and seafood market, and has since spread between close contacts in many communities and countries around the world. There are currently 3,487 cases and 68 deaths in the United States. Although many have been testing in Missouri, there are only six confirmed cases and zero deaths. At this time, there are no cases of COVID-19 in Cole County, and we have no evidence of community spread. The risk to the general public in Cole County remains low. Those at higher risk of exposure to COVID-19 include those who have traveled to geographic regions of community spread, those who are household contact members or close contacts to positive COVID-19 cases, and healthcare workers caring for COVID-19 cases in the hospital setting. Onset of symptoms is typically two to 14 days after the date of exposure. Symptoms of COVID-19 for most people include fever, cough, and shortness of breath. If these people test positive for COVID-19 but do not require hospital care, they will be discharged to their home after discussion with the Cole County Health Department and guidance from Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services. People who have chronic medical conditions, are immunocompromised, and the elderly are at the greater risk of symptoms requiring hospitalization. If you exhibit symptoms of fever, cough, or shortness of breath, call your provider before going to their office, and do not go to the emergency department unless you have a medical emergency. Speak with your provider about recent travel exposure or contact to a positive case of COVID-19. If you do have a medical emergency, go to your emergency department or call 911. It's important to remember that there are many viral illnesses circulating this time of year, and at this time, the risk of exposure to influenza and other viral respiratory illnesses is much greater in Missouri than the risk of exposure to COVID-19. Because of this, providers are encouraged to continue assessing patients and ruling out other viral respiratory illnesses. After ruling out other viral respiratory illnesses and consulting with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, testing for COVID-19 may be approved. COVID-19 diagnostic testing is available through the Missouri State Public Health Lab for individuals meeting criteria established by Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services. Requests for testing approval must come from a provider and should be provided to the Cole County Health Department or the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services via the hotline they set up. That number is 877-435-8411. They will be able to answer other questions about COVID-19 as well through that hotline number. With the expanding spread of COVID-19, additional areas of geographic risk are being identified, and the criteria for considering testing are being updated to reflect this spread. In addition, the criteria for testing has been expanded to include more symptomatic persons, even in the absence of travel history, to affected areas or known exposure to another case to quickly detect and respond to community spread of COVID-19. For individuals not meeting Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services criteria for testing, providers may wish to pursue private lab testing. Testing through private labs does not require Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services approval. As established by Missouri State Statute, the Cole County Health Department is the lead agency regarding COVID-19 for Cole County. As the lead agency, we have been meeting with all other response agencies in the city and county. We have been reviewing our response plans and getting protocols in place to respond in the event that we have ill persons in Cole County with COVID-19. As of this afternoon, March 16th, the Joint Emergency Operations Center has been established for the Cole County and the City of Jefferson. We did this to take a proactive approach for COVID-19. At this time, the Cole County Health Department is implementing the guidelines from CDC to cancel or postpone in-person meetings and events that consist of 50 people or more. This action does not apply to schools, institutes of higher learning, businesses, or essential governmental proceedings. Mitigation efforts have begun across the state of Missouri, including Cole County, to help slow the transmission of disease, protect individuals at an increased risk of severe illness, and protect healthcare as well as critical infrastructure workforces. I would like to emphasize that this has really been a collaborative approach between the City of Jefferson staff and Cole County staff, with guidance from our state and federal partners. Thank you.
Did you want to add anything?
No.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell, and you have with you also Commissioners Sam Bushman, Jeff Hellsher, and Chris Shepperali, and we appreciate them being here. Also, other county elected officials are here this evening, and we appreciate the show of support between the city and county, and you also have been working closely with your staff at the Cole County Health Department as well.
Correct. Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
If people have any questions, the best thing to do is look on www.cdc.gov. They have great guidelines, even for elections and poll workers, schools, businesses, any type of guidance, that's a great place to start. I had a question earlier from a councilman about lodging establishments, because we do conduct the inspections of those in the city, and they would count as businesses. They, of course, could still have their rooms open, but we would not allow any meetings of 50 or more, and the State Public Health Department did put out guidance on special cleaning requirements and guidelines for those facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Campbell and Councilman Graham.
Ms. Campbell, question for you. I was watching President Trump today do his update, and he gave the number of 10.
Right, we did hear about that, but CDC has not taken that and given that out as guidance yet.
So if the CDC updates theirs to 10, it'll reflect?
We will. We have been striving to follow CDC's guidelines.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know Commissioner Bushman, I believe, has, did you have some comments, or just here in support?
No, I didn't, I don't have, our courts also have taken some actions too, but I don't have what Judge Joyce has done. We are, you know, it's really great that the city and county are working together on this, and I really appreciate everything that she, I think everything Christie does is fantastic. So, I've seen, I've seen you a lot today.
We have. Well, thank you, Commissioner Bushman, and to elaborate on your points, we did have a press conference today, and that was all streamed live. You can go to the Cole County Health Department Facebook page to view all the comments that were made by all the speakers. So in addition to Kristi's comments, and I will read my comments now. Earlier today, I made a declaration of emergency regarding the worldwide outbreak of COVID-19. By making this declaration in conjunction with the Cole County Commission, and the city and county are able to start up the Emergency Operations Center, which will be, which will in turn allow for the close cooperative planning and coordination of operations between the many public agencies and stakeholders necessary to effectively and responsibly manage this quickly emerging situation. It is important to remember that no cases of COVID-19 have been reported in Jefferson City or Cole County as of this time. Under state law, within Cole County, the Cole County Health Department is the lead agency for managing public health emergencies and making decisions regarding measures necessary to protect public health. The city fully supports the Cole County Health Department and encourages all citizens of Jefferson City to pay close attention to the information and guidance coming from Cole County Health Department, and to heed and follow the recommendations and directions issued by the Health Department, in addition to those issued by the State Department of Health and Human Services and the Federal Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Currently, these recommendations include canceling or suspending public events with more than 50 people. I have instructed the city administrator to begin evaluating the many public meetings and programs held by the city to identify those which can be classified as nonessential, and to begin exploring the canceling and suspension of those events, as well as potential opportunities for conducting meeting through alternative electronic means. While it is critical to maintain and continue the important work of the city, it is equally important to honor the recommendations of public health officials and avoid holding nonessential events where the public is invited to gather. Further information will be forthcoming on this matter. Finally, I want to reiterate, the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services activated the statewide public hotline for citizens or providers needing guidance regarding COVID-19. That number again, Kristi gave out, is 877-435-8411, and also want to reiterate the collaboration of the City of Jefferson and Cole County working together on this project, along with all of our city departments. So with that, we appreciate the county being here this evening. I know you've had a full schedule, and thank you for taking the time to be here tonight, and you've given us the website and resources, and we will continue to closely monitor the situation together. All right. Thank you all. All right. Item five, we're on to public hearings. Item, Bill 2019-108.
In order to the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving a preliminary PED plan for property located at 3520 West Edgewood Drive.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is being referred to the council by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is for a preliminary plan unit development for a surgical center at 3520 West Edgewood Drive. There we go. Excuse me. First, a little bit about the site. It is located on West Edgewood Drive, about a block west of Wildwood on Harper's Ferry and Edgewood. It's 6.9 acres. Moving clockwise around the property, you have residential single-family zoning to the north, commercial office to the northeast and east. To the south is residential attached zoning and a little bit of C2 commercial, and to the west is plan unit development zoning, just like the property. Jessica, could you, thank you. A little bit about the site. The site is for a 28,000 square foot surgical center, and the associated parking of about 145 parking spaces. There's also accommodating, a possible expansion in the future of about 3,800 square feet, and the additional required parking, which would be along the very north of the parking lot shown there. All the setbacks are met and even exceeded in most of the cases. The property will be adhering to C, excuse me, commercial office zoning for the lighting and signage of the property. Those details aren't in yet, but they'd be following those allowances. The site also includes a sidewalk along West Edgewood Drive as required, and the landscaping will be accommodating a shade area of 35 percent. So it meets all the requirements for CO or exceeds them. Also on the site, there we go, there's already an existing buffer yard to the north. You can kind of see up there, you see a little white, there is an existing rock cut. So the houses to the north are behind the existing buffer yard. That buffer yard will stay, and it will cover the area that the residents may see out of their backs, so they won't be looking right into the building. The drainage on the property, the property slopes basically from the northwest down to the southeast to the corner of the intersection for storm water, they will be anticipating either a detention pond or a underground chamber to catch and treat the water before it is let into the culvert that's actually right there on the corner of the property. The building itself, there we go, you'll see a little bit more of the building when the applicant gives their little presentation. But the building is a combination of several different types of materials, cast stone, stone, brick, metal, and glass. It is, this one graphic doesn't do it justice, but is a very nice building. We've had two comments. One was from a property owner that once they learned more about the buffer yard, they were fine with the issues of the building being located there, and the other one dealt with access into the adjoining property. The Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended this to the City Council for approval unanimously, and I'd be glad to answer any questions, and the applicant is here to give a presentation and address questions also.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. So we would like to invite the applicant to come forward at this time, and at this time, I'll open the public hearing portion, and would like to invite them to present. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Turgeon, members of City Council, city officials, city staff, guests, anyone else. My name's Ben Valier. I am the CEO for Jefferson City Medical Group, and just very excited to talk to you tonight about this project. We've been discussing it and looking at it for many, many years, and we're finally ready to move forward on it with your support, and so I'd like to, with that, introduce you to our lead architect with Mohegan Hansen, Mark Hansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We just have a small little presentation. My name's Mark Hansen. I'm principal at Mohegan Hansen Architects located at 1,012 Oak Center Drive, NYZeta, Minnesota. We just wanted to kind of review the project with you real quick. I don't know which one I have to do here. Well, how about this? Okay. As Ben said, we've been working on this project for a number of years, and we've been looking at the existing surgery center to evaluate, it's aging facility, it's 20 years old, and we looked at evaluating the surgery center to see if we could take a look at expanding it, and when we did that, we had a lot of issues associated with code-compliant issues associated with new codes that are in place, as well as access orientation, and also sizes of the existing spaces within the surgery center. So with that, we looked at, you know, taking the opportunity to see if we could expand it. We went through an exhaustive study with that. It really wasn't feasible. It was just too expensive to do that because of the infrastructure associated with the existing building. So we took a look at relocating the surgery center to another site. And so what we did is, this is the existing surgery center as it sits right now. It's, really, doesn't have a lot of visibility. It's over at 1241 West Stadium Boulevard. It does not have a covered entry or a covered pickup area for the patients, which is really an inconvenience when you bring a person out after having surgery. So that was part of the issues that we looked at, trying to evaluate whether or not we're going to stay here, expand it, or move it. Also, the surgery center, existing surgery center is fairly small in size. Again, it's been cramped, as you can imagine, with the number of procedures that have been done in this facility, the changing of equipment and everything else, the space just was not adequate to be able to do the surgery center, or to expand the surgery center procedures because of the fact that what was happening is that an OR would be used for your storage. So there was just, it really wasn't a very feasible layout anymore. So we took a look at the evaluation of the existing site and the current facility off to the right, and I think there was a book that was handed out to you as well, but this has the graphics in there, but what we did is their current facility is off to the right of the slide. Off to the left is the existing, or excuse me, the proposed site down on Edgewood Boulevard here to the left. This site had been owned by Jefferson City Medical Group by, for about 10 years, and a number of different studies had been looked at to have different building developments there, but really, nothing really would work for that facility, but, and so what we did is we took a look at seeing whether or not this facility would be able to be suitable for having a surgery center of this size on the site. Also, what was required by the new surgery center was to be able to serve the patients of, not necessarily just Jefferson City, excuse me, not necessarily Jefferson City, but also the community at large, and also, we felt this facility would really enhance the surrounding neighborhoods, as well as provide access to the growing needs for surgery center facilities, which is becoming more and more relevant in today's healthcare environment just because of the rising costs associated with procedures done in hospitals. And Jefferson City is, Medical Group is extremely excited about the project. They're committed to be a good neighbor, they're committed to build a quality Class A building, and they've really gone that, to that level, as you can see in some sketches that I'll show you in a few minutes. This is the existing site, just some areas we talked about. You're looking to the north at the site, it's pretty hard to see with the graphics. Hopefully, that book, the graphics that I passed out will be able to show that a little bit better. The site here sits, the entry to the facility is on the south, which is off of Edgewood Boulevard, and the drop, the pickup area is on the east side of the site. There's a circular motion in terms of the vehicular traffic onto the site, and we tried to push the building back to the back part of the site just because of the topography on the existing site, and we tried to work with the topography so we wouldn't change, we changed as little as we could on the site. There's also a little bit of rock on the site, so that's always a challenge in Jeff City. These are some images that I have just of the outside of the design team, so you can see what's going on, and this is, I'm going to show this video. Last time, this didn't work on the screen here, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna start it on my machine here, and you may focus, and I'll show you what it looks like here. This is a video, it's a 3D graphic, so we were able to put the building into the site, and this video is here, it's going to be behind this one, in terms of, just the graphics just aren't presented very well on the screen. But this, you were able to kind of take and go 360 degree around the site, we're able to take a look at what has been designed for the surgery center, also how it sits on the site, and how it also relates to the existing context. If you're looking at this screen here, this is the entry as you come into the site. It's a little bit slow there, sorry. You can see in the background, that's the existing, or excuse me, the new building, that's the entry point, and we're just passing by right now. There'll be a drop-off area that will be able to shield the patients as they're dropped off, and that's going to be on your left of your screen there, and the waiting area is right to the center of the screen. Off to the right, where the larger massive pillar is, that's going to be the pickup area on that side. It's going to have a covered entry, or a covered pickup area, which will be able to protect the patients as they're exiting from the surgery center. This is the pickup area here, and you have a staff entry on the right, which is to the, just to the right of the pickup area. This is a sidewalk on the east side of the property now, the parking lot is to the left, and again, this is just another area view of the pickup area for your patients. The area to the right is the waiting area, and then there's a sunscreen that we're looking at putting on the exterior of the building as well, because it faces to the east and to the south. I don't think it's going to run all the way through, so, well, we'll ignore that. Just the current status of the project, we've been working on the project for a number of months. We had the Planning Commission back in February, we have the City Council meeting tonight, and we're continuing to work on the design. We're trying to see if we can get the design completed by summer, if that works out, if the project is passed here tonight, and we're looking at maybe starting construction sometime in late summer of this year, possibly being completed back in the end of 2021. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Mahalovich?
Did you address two things? The comment made by, that was drawn about the connecting, it looks like they wanted to connect Ria's to that driveway for the surgery center.
I think the existing site had an easement on there. That easement was, is being vacated, because that easement, we cannot connect the parking ramp, or parking lot with the restaurant on the west. West, yeah.
And the second question is, a lot of hard surface here. What are the plans for storm water retention?
The storm water retention is going to be on the, it's going to be on the east side. It's on the northeast, I don't know if we can go back to the plan here, I'll see if I can. Up on the far right-hand side, there's a pond area there. That is where we're going to have the water retention for that area, and then there's also an existing creek that we're not disturbing, which is down on the southeast side of the site, which is kind of, the creek goes underneath Edgewood, and then goes onto the property, and then goes underneath Harper's Ferry. That is being left alone, and we're doing all the retention up on the northeast portion of the site.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
I don't really have a question, just a comment. We had a chance to meet a couple of months ago, and they laid the plan out. I mean, I think there has been concern along Edgewood, how that piece of our city develops, and I think this fits very nicely in kind of the tenor of that community with healthcare, and the VA clinic not too far away, other healthcare down, the expansion of the savings and loan, low-density buildings that are very attractive, so I compliment you that you brought to us what we talked about a couple of months ago. I think it fits the community. I applaud you, the fact that you only had one negative comment. I did talk to that individual, I mean, it just wasn't feasible to meet that need, and you had a compliment, which is even better, so I compliment you on the work. I think it fits our community. I don't live too far from there, so I drive by it fairly often. I think it's a very attractive addition to our city, so.
Well, thank you, and I think the big part of that is Jefferson City Medical Group is really the backing of that. They really wanted a facility that was really going to be a Class A facility for the community, and they take pride in their buildings. You can see, they have a variety of buildings that they have in their portfolio, and this is just one more, and they really wanted to do a nice job with it. one more, and they really wanted to do a nice job with it.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you.
And Mr. Valier. Appreciate you all being here. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on Bill 2019-108? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and take up the bill. Any further council discussion, deliberation on the bill? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. Thank you. Item six, appointments by the mayor. And we have a proposed list for our boards and commissions. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We also have Frank Rysik here with us this evening, who was just reappointed, so congratulations. Item seven, presentations from staff consultant invited guests. We have none this evening. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. You can see all of our upcoming meetings and events at JeffersonCityMo.gov. Are there any council committee announcements? Councilman Mahalovich?
We have a planned finance meeting this Thursday. Depending on discussions with staff, I will determine whether or not we need to have that or not. One, it's pretty standard, and typically, we have all the forms. The only open discussion has to do with local choice, which I'd like to have that discussion, but it wouldn't be an action item for that meeting. It'll just be a discussion. So I might, I think we have one person that is not going to be there on the finance committee. And if there are any others, we may just very well cancel that.
So watch your email and look for that cancellation. And like we mentioned earlier, if any meetings are to be canceled, nonessential, we are working through that right now. Councilman Schreiber?
This isn't about a meeting, but I would like to thank Mr. Spalding and his staff when I got a call this week regarding a water problem over on Merlin, coming from the golf course. And I talked to the lady later, and she was very happy with the quick response that was given. So I want to thank you now before I forget to. And thanks a lot for that fast response.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Ward?
Currently, there's a Human Relations Commission meeting scheduled Friday at 8:00 to cross the hall, unless it's canceled. Or it may go through conference call. We're just waiting.
Okay. Thank you.
It will be announced, though.
Councilman Graham?
While we're talking about it, Public Safety Committee meeting will meet next Thursday. And we are scheduled to meet. We do have a presentation from individuals. So at this point, we will be meeting next Thursday.
Thank you. Any other committees or council announcements? Mr. Sanders, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two brief announcements. There had been a Fair Housing Diversity Workshop scheduled April 7, of which you were going to be, I believe, the keynote kickoff speaker. That has been canceled. So I would like to thank the Housing Authority, Habitat for Humanity, the Jefferson City Board of Realtors, the Missouri Commission on Human Rights, and the City of Jefferson for sponsoring that. But unfortunately, it's not going to be held. And then also, our Household Hazardous Waste Program is continuing. We have, we're scheduling that monthly. We're taking appointments. No drop-offs without appointments, please. You can find that on our website if you just go to JeffersonCityMo.gov, go to Government, and go down to Trash and Recycling, you'll find more information about that. We still have room for some appointments coming up on March 18 this month. So I encourage people, if they have any hazardous materials, to take advantage of that program.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. And I have a few announcements this evening. I did want to recognize that there were four groups that were scheduled to come here this evening to receive presentations or give presentations. And as we're trying to keep groups at a minimum, they all have agreed to either postpone or come at a later time. So we had some Girl Scouts that were to be recognized for the Silver Award. News Tribune has the essay winners for the It Can Wait, the texting and driving essays. So those winners will come at a later date. The Festival of Faith Day has been postponed, so we will be waiting to hear from them when they reschedule that. And at that time, we'll present that proclamation. And I did want to mention on Item D, the Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, that is still happening this month. So we presented that proclamation prior to the council meeting. We appreciate the flexibility of that. It's a good example for all community members in reminding to keep gatherings at a minimum. And appreciate everyone working together. I know our community, as we know, we are used to adversity and things that happen. We went through the tornado. This is not the first time we've seen an emergency operations center and come together. And I have complete confidence in all of the partners that you met earlier with the county, and our city, and other community members that are part of this, that we will be working together. And we appreciate the support of the public as they keep informed. I think one of the best thing they can do is to read up on the information that is on the Cole County Health Department website. You can go to JeffersonCityMo.org. There's a link on our homepage that has information. I would encourage everyone to take a moment and read all that information, so they have current and accurate and fact-based information. And a lot of the questions you'll find will be answered there. So again, we appreciate everybody's cooperation on our team moving forward with this. So thank you all. The last announcement, Item B, is the Missouri Bicentennial Update. We are moving forward with that planning for '21. And then we also have our Census update. To keep in mind that Census Day is April 1, and those forms will begin going out. But not everyone will receive a form, as that is being done online as well. Any further announcements? Items nine, any Lincoln University update? Okay. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on any items that are on the agenda this evening? Okay. Item 11, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, bills introduced, 2019-110.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Central Missouri Overhead Door in the amount of $50,250 for the replacement of bus barn and bus wash overhead doors and operators.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, contract will replace overhead doors at our transit, central maintenance facilities. 12 total doors for the bus barn and wash. And approximately $40,000 is grant, and $10,000 from HAP-CIP. Have to answer any questions. And we have a checkmark asking to suspend the rules.
Thank you. Any council questions? Mr. Hussey?
Madam Mayor, I had asked for suspension of the rules and third reading and vote on this bill this evening.
Thank you. We've had a request from Councilman Hussey to suspend the rules. Are there any objections? Seeing none, we will take up 2019-110. Is there any council deliberation or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please. Or would you like to, we'll have you read that again. Do we need to do that, Mr. Moulman, on these bills?
Yes, we still need another reading.
Okay. So we will read 2019-110.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Central Missouri Overhead Door in the amount of $50,250 for the replacement of bus barn and bus wash overhead doors and operators.
Any further deliberation? Roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2019-111.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the Cultural Arts Commission members section of the city code to reduce the number of members.
Mr. Spalding?
Thank you, Mayor. We had requested this through the administrative committee because of our inability to get a quorum. We struggled with that. We originally had asked to go to nine, and working with Gail and our staff, it was then requested to go to seven. So that's where we're at.
Thank you. Any council questions or deliberation? Is there any request to move forward with this this evening, or wait till our next scheduled meeting? Request to suspend the rules?
Yeah.
Okay. We've had a request to suspend the rules. Any objections? Okay, we will take up 2019-111.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the Cultural Arts Commission members section of the city code to reduce the number of members.
Any further discussion, deliberation, questions? Yes?
If I may, I just, I wanted to note that we, as a committee, decided to go down to seven on this one, because they were having such difficulty getting quorum, even though we moved to teleconferences with this particular committee. And it was originally a smaller committee, and they increased the size at one time. But we believe that seven is going to allow them to have quorum and actually get some business done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wiseman. Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 13, bills pending, 2019-104.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the Jefferson City Police Department, amending the 2019-2020 annual budget and authorizing the expenditure of such funds.
Captain Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. This is appropriations from our forfeiture fund through the Department of Justice to be able to buy 18 ballistic vests for our SWAT team. They have an eight-year life expectancy, and they're due for replacement.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2019-113.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for the governor's transportation cost share funds.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, the city was successful in getting some of the governor's cost share money through a grant that was recently put out for competitive applications. And our application from the city was the Clark Avenue roundabouts at the interchange. We already had a roundabout focused on Dunkland and Clark. And so this was, we were able to apply for these two additional roundabouts at the interchange. And we're successful at that. So the cost share agreement would be for $1,910,000. It's a 50-50 match. And so the total project with staff time and everything included is, you know, estimated to be close to $5 million. So our share out of the original roundabout project, as well as additional, a few additional city-county funds and staff time, we're able to meet this match and move forward on it. The, you might remember, this was, has long been in a campo plan from the state, back when we were looking at access to MSP. So this is kind of a backdoor access to MSP for the future, and also access to LU, Lincoln University, on this site as well. So we have to answer any questions.
Councilman Prather?
I just wanted to confirm that the county is on board with the cost share.
Yes. We've met with the county and talked to them about that. And, you know, a lot of email traffic back and forth about that. And one of the main things was to make sure we save money back for MSP grant matching. And we have done that with this project.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Mahalovich?
I do believe we got some positive correspondence from Immaculate Conception Schools as well on this project. And I'm not aware of by letter any other support, but I think there's a significant amount of support for this project in that area.
Thank you.
Ross?
Councilman Fitzwater?
I was just going to commend them on the work on this. I think that was a $50 million total grant from the governor.
Oh, yes.
For us to get $2 million of it in this area is pretty amazing. So it means we had our act together. We had, for lack of a better word, shovel-ready project that we could push forward. So I think the due diligence that we had, our staff has done, served this community well. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And we are asking for suspension of the rules, so that we can move this project forward. We're at a tight timeframe. I might mention also, our goal is to be under construction next summer. And that's a big effort, get the engineering done in that timeframe. We've already started surveying it. So we're working closely with the state on that. And we have to answer any questions.
Councilman Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. I request suspension of the rules to have this third read and voted on this evening.
Thank you. Any objections? 2019-112.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to, one, accept an amended historic preservation fund agreement, and, two, execute an agreement with Walter P. Moore for the assessment of unreinforced masonry buildings in the Missouri State Capitol and Munichburg Commercial Districts.
Any further deliberation, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 13, bills pending, 2019-104.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the Jefferson City Police Department, amending the 2019-2020 annual budget and authorizing the expenditure of such funds.
Captain Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. This is appropriations from our forfeiture fund through the Department of Justice to be able to buy 18 ballistic vests for our SWAT team. They have an eight-year life expectancy, and they're due for replacement.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Bill passes. 2019-106.
An ordinance regarding the city's procedures for conducting criminal background checks for potential city employees.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. This bill would allow for the city to conduct background checks for potential employees, not only through the Missouri State Highway Patrol, which we are currently doing, but also through FBI national databases. This ordinance reflects language required by the FBI to be passed by the governing body of the city in order to take advantage of that, those databases.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Ward?
Mr. Moulman.
Thank you. This bill would allow for the city to conduct background checks for potential employees, not only through the Missouri State Highway Patrol, which we are currently doing, but also through FBI national databases. This ordinance reflects language required by the FBI to be passed by the governing body of the city in order to take advantage of that, those databases.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Bill passes. Twenty nineteen, one oh seven.
An ordinance amending the Personnel Policy Manual, Article thirteen, sick leave, Section thirteen dash two, when taken.
Mr. Moulman.
Thank you. This bill would amend the Personnel Policy Manual related to sick leave and particularly sick family leave. Currently, sick family leave can be only taken in situations where the family member to be taken care of is an immediate household, immediate family member living within the household. This bill would give discretion to the city administrator to open that up for particular types of situation where family care is needed, but the person needing care does not particularly meet the, the strict definition of a immediate household or immediate family living within the household.
Any questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Bill passes. We've taken up twenty nineteen, one oh eight. Twenty nineteen, one oh nine.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving the incorporation of the Jefferson City Redevelopment Corporation and designating the city's proxy for purposes of representing the city's ownership of all ownership holdings in the Jefferson City Redevelopment Corporation.
Mr. Moulman.
Thank you. This bill would authorize the incorporation of the Jefferson City Redevelopment Corporation, which is conjunction with the city's proposed institution of Chapter three fifty-three tax, real estate tax abatement programs. State law requires that an actual redevelopment corporation be incorporated. This would authorize the incorporation of that, of that corporation and would also designate the mayor, the city administrator, and the city director of finance as the board of directors, uncompensated board of directors of that corporation. And once the corporation is instituted, the city will be able to offer real estate property tax abatement to potential developers and also perhaps be used in other neighborhood and community improvement projects.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Mahalovich?
Could you address this three fifty-three relative to how we currently work with the housing authority and that we, in, in that we don't want to be in competition necessarily with the housing authority? We still need them, but the uniqueness of this, this three fifty-three?
Sure. So, so while Chapter three fifty-three offers similar tax abatement, real estate tax abatement programs to the housing authority, it, it's a little bit more flexible in that it offers a wider range of the term of years that the tax abatement can be used for and also allows for flexibility in what those tax abatement could be, generally anywhere between fifty percent and hundred percent of the tax abatement. So essentially what we're looking at is a flexible tool that will be used to complement our economic development incentive program. Essentially, it is filling a hole somewhere in between tax abatement offered by the housing authority as their role, in their role as the land clearance redevelopment authority, which is generally tax abatement for ten years. And then something like TIF, which is for very large projects and are very expensive to institute. This is more of a middle approach where there, where the costs of issuance of the tax abatement is less and doesn't have the full complement of, of other types of tax benefits like TIF does, like re, re, reallocated sales taxes. So this, this kind of fits a nice little hole that city staff has seen, kind of evident there where, where we have projects come in that are really too big for LCR type tax abatement, but too small for TIF. So it's, it's meant to be another quiver, arrow in our quiver in the, in the economic development incentive game.
And I also do want to recognize we have Mr. Larry Vincent here, who is the chair of the Housing Authority Board and also a former city councilman. It's always nice to have a former councilman here, so thank you for your service to Housing Authority. Any other questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Bill passes. Item fourteen, nothing on the informal. Item fifteen, resolutions. We have resolution twenty nineteen, twenty seven.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Jefferson, Missouri to apply for an Economic Development Administrative Disaster Recovery Grant.
Mr. Moulman.
Thank you. This resolution would allow city staff to apply for a grant from the Federal Economic Development Administration Disaster Recovery Grant Program. The grant amount being potentially sawed as six million dollars. It's an eighty-twenty grant with that eighty falling toward the federal government side. So the matching funds proposed would be one point two million dollars out of the city, city-county joint capital improvement sales tax, some of which has already been identified as potentially being for the MSP project. So the, the idea is that we would, we would apply for grant funds to help build out public infrastructure in the MSP. Currently is thought that we would apply in a project-neutral way, so if, if in the event that the city council makes a decision on how it wants to go about with development of MSP, the application can be, can be honed to reflect that decision. But if no decision is made by the time of application, essentially we can put forth a plan where we are doing more general types of laying out of public infrastructure within MSP with the goal of creating developable, develop, developable commercial pad sites, making the MSP redevelopment more attractive for people that want to invest and, and start businesses, businesses within the MSP redevelopment. So essentially, right now, we're looking at flexibility and, and really taking advantage of a program that, that we have been told is potentially competitive for this type of grant. And essentially what we're looking for now is permission to apply. Applications are due around May first and so if, if this is something that we want to try for, city staff needs to get geared up and, and do that. They said that awards of the, of the DR grants, EDA, DR grants will likely be coming down sometime in September. And so at that time, if the city were awarded any money under this grant, it would come back to the city council for acceptance of the grant. So right now, this is just to, just to get our name in the ring and apply for the money.
Thank you. Mr., Councilman Hussey.
For clarity's sake, the, the way the resolution reads, it's an award of six million, but is that really four point eight in grant dollars and one point two?
No, it's six million dollars in grant money plus one point two million dollars in, in matching funds. So total project cost of seven point two million dollars.
And so the, okay. So they're, they're counting the twenty percent to be of the six million as opposed to twenty percent of the total seven point two. Does that make sense?
Ee.
A lot of times in these grants, it's a million dollar grant. It's an eighty-twenty, which means eight hundred thousand and twenty thousand to equal one million.
Right. So, so essentially, essentially what we were kind of, we were working with partners with the Missouri Regional Planning Commission, essentially say probably the most optimistic outlook for, for receiving funds is six million dollars for the program. So, so if we had seven point million, seven point two million dollars in infrastructure projects, we would be going for the six million dollars in, in, in grant funds. So, so essentially what we're looking at is a seven point two million dollar project with six million coming from, coming from the federal government. And so there's also, also a chance that they could reduce that amount, so.
No, I just want to make sure that we're applying the twenty percent match to the right number. Is the twenty percent match intended to be applied to the total, including our funds or to the six million? Because right now, it's applied to the six million and that's how we get to one point two million, right? Twenty percent of six million is one point two million dollars.
My, my. I apologize, I'm, I'm bad at math.
No, no, that's correct. I just want to make sure that we're, that we're not actually low on what our match is supposed to be as opposed to if the match is supposed to be seven, or if the total project's supposed to be seven point five.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're supposed to have twenty percent of the total project cost. Does that make sense?
And to do it, I mean, you are correct. It's actually slightly different than that. We kind of throw that number around, but, so once we get this application together, you know, we'll hone in on that number. I think it's up to six million dollars of federal funds and then we certainly have enough in our city-county CIP to still match that amount. But we, you know, we've got to hone in on the estimate. That's part of putting the application together, but we're on a short timeframe, so.
No, I, I get that. I just want to make sure that the math is correct.
Yes.
Because the resolution reads that it would be up to one point two of a, up to six million dollar project. But if you're taking twenty percent of seven point two million dollars, you're really taking one point four million dollars.
Yeah.
That's got to be a local match. I just want to make sure we're, we're applying the twenty percent to the correct number.
You're, you're correct.
Okay.
And the, and the final numbers would be in the grant acceptance as well. That's why you don't let a lawyer do too much math.
Any action need to be taken on that?
I have a question, ma'am.
Councilman Graham?
Since we're talking about match, what would this one point, whatever it is, where would it come from?
It would come from joint city-county, joint city-county capital improvement sales tax funds, which have been identified for economic development projects.
And the county is aware of this and they're on board with this?
Um, so generally, the, the one point six million dollars has been identified as being for MSP and this is MSP money. The specifics, because we don't have the specifics yet, we're still working on it, on the application, that will be brought to the county for, for kind of their sign-off on the specifics. But this is generally money that's already been identified for MSP redevelopment.
So I have one more question. So the developable pad site that you talked about earlier, was that part of what was conveyed to the city?
I'm sorry.
You said, you said the developable, developable pad site.
Mm-hmm.
Is that part of what was conveyed to the city?
Yeah, so, so the idea is, would be to take what was conveyed to the city and build the infrastructure. And so after you build out the infrastructure, what you're left with are developable pad sites. So the idea would be to create more than one developable pad sites.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item sixteen, presentation of the gallery on other topics. Do we have anyone here that would like to speak on any topic this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to item seventeen, any council and staff discussion of presentation topics? Item eighteen, I need a motion to approve the March second, twenty twenty closed session minutes.
So move.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Abstain.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Abstain.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item nineteen, new business, possible discussion or action on MSP redevelopment. Mr. Moulman.
So there was expressed to me some interest on putting this item on the city council agenda for any potential discussion, action, or public comment on the MSP redevelopment project. It is kind of up to the city council to determine on if there's any action that wants to be taken on this matter.
Thank you. Would you like to give us an update on that?
Before we undertake any type of discussion, I would request that their vote to actually discuss the item be made by the city council before discussions actually take place.
Is there a motion to have this discussion in open session?
So moved.
Any further discussion? And this can be a roll call, I mean, a voice vote, right?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
It's a motion to discuss in open session.
We should clarify, this is a closed topic because of the competitive nature of the bids, so typically this will be done in closed sessions. So the action the council is taking now is to discuss this in open.
Right.
Correct?
Your hand is first.
Councilman Fitzwater?
Well, I just had a question since all of this theoretically has been enclosed, although there's been a lot in the media. Should this be addressed in a closed session or is this an, I know it's an appropriate motion, is it the right way to go about this process?
So consideration of sealed proposals and negotiated contracts are authorized to be closed documents in closed sessions under the Missouri sunshine law. Generally, what you, generally, the reason those types of proposals are contemplated to be handled in closed session is because of the competitive nature. And so I think the thought is that when open discussion of competitive redevelopment and competitive proposals is done in open session, it reduces the city's negotiation power. I think that's essentially what the statute is tied for, is not unduly reducing the city's negotiation power in any type of sealed proposals or contract negotiations. And so to the extent that we are still undergoing a competitive proposal process and potential contract negotiations on redevelopment of MSP, it would be appropriate to do these under closed session, but as always, the city council's prerogative to discuss closed items in open sessions upon a vote. And so I think what the city council has to decide is, are we going to impact the city's negotiation powers by having a discussion in open session? And I think that is a question that the council has to answer for themselves. But generally, you do this so that way the city can kind of hold its cards to its chest a little bit and retain negotiation power. And so I think the question is, do we give anything up by doing this in open session? That's kind of the reason behind the statute, so that's a question I think the council has to decide for themselves.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. And just to clarify, this resolution is, it's a procedural proposal about next steps. I think we can and certainly should be able to discuss this without getting into specifics of either proposal, the merits of either proposal, without getting into a deliberation tending anywhere towards, you know, making some sort of selection. Simply, it's a discussion of how we want to proceed and, you know, get towards wrapping this up. So I think that's a, it's a topic that's perfectly appropriate. I appreciate Councilor Moulman's comments, but I think we can discuss this without touching on anything that would, should even arguably be closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we also have, Councilman Fitzwater, you had your hand up a moment ago, and there are, we have both resolutions before us.
Point of order. I heard a motion for this resolution by Councilman Hensley. I don't know that I even heard a second. So are we taking up one proposal or two or?
The first step is getting it in open session. So we had the motion and second to put it into open session, and where did we end on that?
We hadn't done the voice.
Okay, so that's where, so right now, the discussion is on that motion. Is that correct?
Yeah.
To bring this into open session.
Yeah, and I think, myself and maybe the clerk would like clarification if it is one or both of the resolutions.
And so we're still discussing that motion? Councilman Prather?
I believe that we should do the resolutions as we usually do in open session, but the merits of the specifics that we're not supposed to bring to public yet, we could have the discussion first and then come back, reconvene, and then have the resolutions read if we still choose to do so. We could do it after that. It doesn't have to be before.
And I saw a few other hands, and I'm not sure who was first, so I saw Mahalovich and Fitzwater, so, oh, okay. Mahalovich, okay. Okay. Councilman Mahalovich?
I'm still looking for a point of order. I heard, does it pick a motion and a second to put this on the discussion?
Yes.
Okay, I heard a motion, two as a second.
Wiseman. Aaron.
For this resolution.
So we are, we have the motion and second to take this up in open session. Is that correct?
Correct, and I believe that's limited to resolution 2019-28.
So, and this is a little unique situation because we have two different resolutions, so how would we, we have to, how can the merits of both of them be compared in an open session?
I would say, I would say that there would need to be another motion to take up 2019 and 29, also in open session.
So is there a motion to take up, can we do that with two motions?
I believe that there is a motion on the table that needs to be voted on before further motions are taken, unless there's some sort of motion to combine the two.
So we have a motion to take up one or, I'm trying to think of the fairest way to do this, having two different resolutions? Deal with one? Councilman Hussey?
Proceedally, I guess I'm confused by this motion to take something up in open session. I suspect that as council members, we retain the authority to make a motion to take up a resolution, and it has been seconded, not necessarily as a motion to take it up in open session, but as a motion to take up the resolution, right? Like, and usually when we go through this process, there's a motion and a second, and now we are actually discussing the resolution.
I believe that this is a closed document which city ordinance retains as being closed until opened by the city council. So I really think there's really two procedural motions that need to go with each of these resolutions, one to do it in open session and the one to take it up for a vote.
What's the motion right now?
It seems as though there's some hesitancy amongst ourselves to have maybe a thorough discussion for fear of wanting to talk about some specifics that people feel more comfortable in closed session before taking action in open. I mean, I think, I understand what Councilman Hensley said about it can be fairly straightforward. I'm not certain, does everybody agree that there can be a full discussion on these? I don't know. Councilman Prather, I thought, made a point to say, should we go to close and then come back to open, at least to feel comfortable with the discussion we have and not violating any contractual obligations that we have.
And we do still have a motion on the floor, Councilman Hensley. And we'll review that here in a moment.
Yeah, and I would simply say, I think 2019-28 is capable of discussion because it's not making a selection, it's setting a procedure. I would agree that you can't really talk about, we can't really talk about 2019-29 without getting into a merits discussion, but that's not the one that's on the table right now. But if Councilman Prather's comfortable going into closed to discuss merit matters, then that's fine with me also.
So we have a motion. What is the motion that we currently have?
The current motion is to discuss resolution 2019-28 in open session.
Councilman Hensley?
I'd like to amend the motion on the table to discuss 2019-28 in closed session.
I suppose I can have a second to that.
With the, with the understanding that we will come back into open session to vote on it.
So we have the motion and second to take up 2019-28 in closed session. And procedurally, since we do have two resolutions, and I want to try to find the most fair way, other than which person spoke first, what's the most fair way to take up both resolutions this evening?
Assuming we went into closed session, the closed session is appropriately noticed up for discussion under 610-02112, and so I believe that the city council can have its discussion in closed session and then make a motion in closed session to take one, both, or none of the resolutions up in open session.
Okay. So we have a motion second. Any further, Councilman Hensley?
I think I'm going to have to do this. I feel sort of like Councilman Hussey, coming back and slightly adjusting what I'm saying repeatedly. I'd like to amend the motion on the table to take up 2019-28 and 2019-29 for discussion in closed session, coming back into open session for a vote. Thank you.
Okay. Sure. Okay. Second. Have our motion and second. Sorry, is everybody clear? Are we, we have our motion and second?
Do that for the record. We would need to have a second vote to actually go into closed session because there's another matter also noticed up for the city council in closed session as well. So whether or not that's done in the same one or not, it just, the city council needs to identify which matters are being brought up, which sunshine matters are going to be brought up. So I would suggest a second roll call motion to actually go into closed session.
Okay. So we have the first motion. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolution passes, and now we need the closed session motion read for the legal action.
Starting legal actions, causes of action or litigation under section 610, point 021.
Mrs. Donaldson will read the closed session motion.
Yeah, so there are two matters which would need to be read out, both one for attorney-client privilege and legal matters, and then another one for sealed bids and negotiated contracts. So I would suggest at this time, if there is a desire to come back into open session to deal with the MSP matters, and then reconvene in closed session after that is done, the discussion on the attorney-client matter could be potentially somewhat lengthy, and so I just kind of wanted to keep that in the minds of the city council while they're figuring out how they want to proceed with business.
Okay.
So there's certainly nothing saying that we couldn't go into closed session, come into open session, deal with the MSP matters in whichever way the council decides, and then go back in the closed session to deal with the attorney-client legal matters.
Okay. Mrs. Donaldson?
So is this under subsection 1 and 12, or just?
I believe what's open to the, to the motion maker.
I don't think my motion can be seconded, so I think it's a second.
I'm just going to read the legal jargon.
Don't we have a motion to go into closed session?
I believe Mr. Mahalovich just withdrew it.
You withdraw it?
No. Or did I misunderstand? I believe you had a motion for 610-0211.
So you want to go, I think. I understand it now. You want to go under the item 12.
12.
12, not the other item.
Yes.
We could go back under, so I would.
Yes.
I allow the clerk to read the motion that I'm supposed to move forward.
Go into closed session pursuant to section 610 dot 021 subsection 12, sealed bids and related documents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
So motion passes, so we will have closed session here in this room, and if the audience would like to be in the Boom Bancroft Room across the hall and.
Don't go too far.
Don't mingle. Within six feet of each other.
Hey, Vincent, Vincent, six feet apart, Vincent.
Six feet.
Six feet, Larry, six feet.
I'm staying six feet from you and then.
Right. 12 feet from Larry.
I'm staying further away from you, the rest.